So, I will pass my TV on the better, the bottom, the bottom, the bottom vision. Same thing as your TV.
One, two, just stay one, two. Hello, hello, please sit down, please sit down, hello? One, two, one, two. One, two. Ladies and gentlemen, I am so happy to welcome. Welcome to our town hall. We are very happy to have you here. My grateful, what is this uh? Uh, my heart is, I hope, and of course, three, I promise. Ego's in that forum, welcome. Ego's in that forum, welcome, Aswe Ego Lao. And it's wonderful. Doctor O'Scarra, Dr. O'Keefe. To London. And we don't get sick, but interactive session with the incoming governor. Like brothers, from the same house. Now, everything is big. It's the man of the game, the man for the job, the man who wants to talk, he's not for the cash. Ladies and gentlemen, he's on the right. The man of the moment, ladies and gentlemen. All the heart, all the spirit. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please sit down. All of you, please sit down, please sit down. Thank you. The love tree, the love tree. I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, now wait to sit down, now wait to sit down, please, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now wait to sit down, please, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now listen, Rapulu, Rapulu. It's uh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Alright. Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the last important, our people, Ego Barcha, with. Yes, yeah, ladies, Ego, who loves Barcha, Rajo. Thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Ego Barcha, Rajo. Thank you very much, madam, thank you very much, everyone, please, we implore you to be seated. Thank you very much, about the start of the program, and everyone, please grab a seat. His excellency is waiting, is in our midst, yes, I call it a lot of respect, please, let him do the same. Thank you very much. One house, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we'll welcome you to this August event. The town hall meeting with the PDP governorship candidates for the September twenty first election in Edo State. Doctor Aswe Ego Lao and his deputy, Doctor O'Scarra, Dr. O'Keefe. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, allow us to introduce ourselves, we are your anchors for tonight. My name is Rose Keith Brea, of Rose on All Sides, on Ben Television here in the United Kingdom. WW dot Rose on All Sides, and of course, me. I can't believe it, thank you so much. Uh, I know this is. When I want to, I want to. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, I appreciate you, a very quick, just a bit of housewarming. We are not looking forward for twenty magicians, but just in case, this is what we have said for all six. For you, my favorite, when I'm expecting, yeah, I'm not, ladies and gentlemen, I will implore you to thank the Lord. Oh my goodness, oh my goodness, oh my goodness. I agree with you, I mean, thank you very much, Doctor Bari, can you be seated? Thank you, I do not want to be far, I'm going to come to you. His excellency is waiting, is in our midst, can we accord him the respect? Please, please. He came all the way from Nigeria, he has been to Manchester, he's been to Italy, he's here with us, this is London. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, please, this item, in my profession, we call it the welcome of past destruction. Please, time to put it on the table, thank you very much, thank you very much. I would like to ask you, if you know, the question I will answer in session, we are going to move on to item seven. Thank you, um, we shall be moving forward to item number three, which is opening the map. Um, I have the honor to confirm our diaspora DJ.
How are you?
Is this the happening table? Our incoming governor. A distinguished, legal, culinary, with so much intricate patterns of a dominating, you know, communal combination. A man of very high intellectualism. Ladies and gentlemen, it is being in my single opportunity, to now present to you, if you are ready. Our distinguished incoming governor, a person of doctor barista, Aswe Lima Igodan. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to presenting you formally for the London Diaspora. Yes, your excellency, you are a man of high intellect, a political colossus. Who have worn, who have worn the hat, who have worn the hats of so many. Ladies and gentlemen, want to present you formally, for the president of PDP Edo State, Doctor Aswe Igodan. You become my.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, uh, can I take a seat? Our incoming governor, Doctor Asweleme Igodalo, the previous, Ma'asapi Igodalo. I just want to introduce to us our next item now.
Um, let me have the honor to introduce, to General Assembly. Uh, DDJ, Master, uh, Raymond, please stand in General Assembly. Put your hands together for our DDJ, the Asperan DDJ. Put your hands together. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, um, our principal, our leading official. Um, let me give you from us that it's actually a good, a good, a good. A good, uh, our incoming official. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, your excellency, sir, Doctor Asweleme Igodalo. Your excellency, sir. Uh, I learnt a very big lesson yesterday in Manchester, where you showed us what a leader is about. You know each and every one of the persons in your environment, and you gave them a fitting introduction yesterday. Sir, please, I don't want to go ahead of myself, I would plead with you if you could do that again today. Yes, sir. You're the man of the people, you understand those who walk with. You understand their strengths, their capacity. And you gave them, uh, a proper welcome yesterday. So, sir, let us allow you. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Doctor Asweleme Igodalo. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you'll be looking at me, look at me. Ladies and gentlemen, very briefly, I just want to go through, um, the guys that have come all this way with me. First of all, because I'm a partner. A man with two partners now. So I think I need to leave my political partner first, before I can leave my longer term partner. I'd like everybody to please fully applaud Mister Barista, friend, partner, Osama Adiyah.
Please welcome to the stage for, uh, Barista.
I wouldn't say what I said. I wouldn't say what I said in Manchester yesterday. But I fully repeat what I said in Manchester yesterday. Um, and I'm here today majorly because of Osama Adiyah. I'm here today majorly. I'd also like to introduce my wife, Susan White Igodalo. If you have her, please. You know particular order from there, my friend Ebosa, Ebosa, and Ebosa has been here, he's part of us, you know? My sister is okay, oh, you know, it's okay, who should know it's okay? It's okay, stand up, let me show you. She's a commissioner for physical therapy. Right next to her is my friend and sister, Ifeko Alufahai. She's a permanent secretary for SDG, but more than that, she's been my permanent secretary and executive secretary in Alagodaro. Great girl. If you have Osama on your side, you can never do wrong. Then that commissioner that can make you a millionaire in a trickle of an eye. If he gives you palm oil land, you don't become millionaire, still in their head. Please, better know him. His tribes are palm oil and rubber, they're in those states. I will introduce T D and all the London people. London people introduce themselves. Right next to him or behind him is a fellow called Crusoe. You wonder how Robinson Crusoe came to be here? Well, Crusoe's sake, he's one of those people that I know. Right next to him is somebody who's been my friend for sixty years, sixty years. G T Ola, G T Baba, G T Ola today, attention, please stand up for everyone. There are two guys that are missing. They said they wanted to go to Tamil Nadu. So I don't know when they went to Tamil Nadu. When they come, so let the woman reintroduce. The Director General for the ASEAN, the Campaign Committee, Matthew E. Matthew E. You're lucky, man. You see, it's very, it's a problem. Matthew E. The dog. All the people that stand up, it's, you guys stand back, stand up. So the body boys, it's letting you play hard. And then your footage, your videos, that, your video over that, so you're fine. Of course. Oh my God, that's my sister, my daughter, my daughter's sister. So, uh, the people start. Then, one of my most favorite men in the whole world. My wife can be jealous, nobody can be jealous. Please stand up, please stand up. And then, another old friend of mine, who I'm really shy, I'm really one of the seventy-five. We're gonna leave you in the house now. Oh my, oh my, in the house, thank you. Bless us all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we can put our hands together. People that hands together for excellency. Okay. Really, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. And I just, your excellency, I'm a fast learner. You do it better. You know your people.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, yes, yes. And we would also like to recognize other people, Osase, 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 he wrote, Deputy Inspector, Field Operations Campaign Committee. Thank you very much, sir. And of course, the American, Philippine, UK, United Kingdom is also with us. This is Alaa Sambo. Chairman, P P P. We also like to recognize General Secretary of the P P P, President of the House of Commons. Thank you very much for joining us. So let us move on to agenda on the program, ladies and gentlemen. There's one thing about campaigns, I like we know. When, uh, everyone is looking up to, promote women and children, support that individual.
But I paid attention to do my research on the man who is happy because he was. Once meditating slowly, it echoes my alarm that the man who is happy because he was not to ask him because he was. And that is constantly for election to become next governor of Edo State. Who is Dr. Aswe Igudalo and why Dr. Aswe Igudalo for Edo State government? Some may wonder, well during my research, I discovered that Dr. Aswe Igudalo is a man who truly cares for the people. An investor, a human servant, an empath, and a benefactor. A man who sees everyone as equal. A man with good character to lead, a man with huge capacity, competence, and experience to bring Edo to greater heights and bring Edo into a brighter light. No one goes so far as to talk about an election. An election, a process in which people choose a group or person to hold an official position or title. That is an election. The start and exception, a start that will change things, a start that will make the state better, a start that could do so many good things if you choose the right candidate. To choose an educated candidate who will open their eyes wide using their intellect and intelligence to decide what is best for Edo State. So vote Dr. Aswe Igudalo for better education, providing young people with better information, for better light, giving you electricity served right, for better hospitals and life, and with him you will hear no political strife. Win Aswe Igudalo will be a future served right to bring Edo to greater heights. By the special grace of God, I hope to stand in front of you for another period during your inauguration comes November two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. You see what a moment this is, ladies and gentlemen, what a moment. It is beautiful, it is beautiful. She was looking forward to her better education, her better life in Edo. As a little child, she said, "I'm going to travel around with Aswe Igudalo." And she said, "This is what we want, this is what we want."
That's a good. That's a good.
And you were told this, they were like, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." And those, and those people all across the world, they're being popular, please. I would like to put them on the top of the list in my.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, please, our principal secretary, can we just take our seat? Please, we want everybody to sit down, we don't have seats, please, we want everybody to sit down, please. Our principal will be coming on stage soon to declare his manifesto, we want calmness everywhere, please. We are all adults, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tonight we are looking for a fantastic opportunity for everyone here. We had a meeting one yesterday in Manchester, and we believe that number, given the proclamation and the laxiness in this city, we are going to get more operationally exercised than expected today. Okay, Andrew, what do you have next, ladies and gentlemen?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we in those months.
Yes, please, this is important, we seek to, but please, it is the best for us to do this, and one for us all to please rise up for the national anthem of Edo State. Edo State anthem, brotherhood, national anthem.
Edo State anthem, please, Edo State anthem. We are Nigerian, this is the DJ. Now, the Nigerian national anthem, the new one, from what plan, right?
We are hoping to go for the two, the two. Tell us that we go to Edo anthem, after that, we go for the national anthem. DJ, are we ready?
Thank you. Okay.
No.
Yes, so, so, please, I come towards the honors of singing, we have to do the national anthem. Thank you. Please, this anthem is probably the second page. And in the chorus, when we say "be this way," you erase off your hat, please. That's okay. Two, three, go. The Asian city is calling, all the rights and dollars of the land. The dream of the city is marching, standing high to the pride of the land. The founding fathers are eager, and the time to stand is now. The glory of the people, the nation, will never be a pride. Beautiful, glorious, beautiful, happy, for Nigeria. Beautiful, glorious, stars are singing over you. You're the land of the dream to me. Thank you. Thank you very much, madam. Ladies and gentlemen, the moments we've been waiting for, the moments were all here. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honor that we introduce to you tonight. The public candidate of the People's Democratic Party. For the Edo election coming up September twenty-first, let us welcome the charismatic, the experienced, the visionary, the mysterious, the brave suppose, the innovative, the articulate, ladies and gentlemen, the empath, the articulate, the visionary man, ladies and gentlemen. I'd be very welcome, the man of the people.
Please sit down, please.
So the man of the people, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Aswe Igudalo. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Before I go to my presentation and my manifesto. I really want to thank everybody, I really want to thank everybody. I don't think you will find any kind of a problem after a hard day of work. I will very quickly go through my presentation, which invites our manifesto. What I say, I'm talking myself and my fellow people, okay? But I'm deep, I'm really deep, oh, yeah. So, everything is ours. Moreover, I suspect that the manifesto has been circulated. And to be honest, it is still work in progress, it is a draft document. After we've gone round here in the UK, we've been to Italy, and then we go through Germany, your feedback will form part of what we have in the manifesto. This is a document, it's not something we sat and conceived, it's a document that came from, from nineteen ninety-two, from the States, from eighteen hundred years ago, going through markets, going through, going through offices, going through socials, and finding out what the principles for our people are. What do our people want? What do our people need? Combine it with what to take our people into the first world. And I'll take this to fight back. In nineteen ninety-two, Singapore didn't have what they do, they had. And Singapore, in twenty years, became a first world country. What we are nine determine, working with the first class team, is to ensure that by the grace of God, we are people of the United States, we will become the government of the United States, come November twenty-four, we will by the grace of God, move a country into the first world. And by going through this presentation, you fools will understand the meaning of freedom. One of the things that make our path clear is the fact that since nineteen fifty-six, when Nigeria started producing oil, oil, we started making plenty and plenty and plenty of money, enough money to create seven divides. We see that in Nigeria, where people don't eat, where people can't eat, where people don't have life, where people don't have water, where people don't have roads, it's a lazy system. Many of you just said, "I come to school here." And you do so much better than those who are indigenous here. So you're smarter than them, you know who passed there, you care for class, but they are a first world country, and you want to build a world, okay? So there's some that are doing, there's some countries, there's others. That problem is what we must solve. The other thing is that you guys are here, and you have the opportunity to get, that the best of the people get, because we are the best of the world, we need to get, okay? So if you guys need people from here, yeah, and you guys are the best of the world, okay? Why? Why? So, aside from yourself, and offer ourselves, to stay as a first world, become first world. And people have to be stronger. When Nigeria is third world, how can a state in Nigeria become first world? And I know that I say, you guys stand to the economic street, you're true to the economic street, but that's still a community Malaysia as part of Malaysia. You will know that many states in Australia, cities in India, where the suffering, the sub-suffering overtakes the suffering. When you look at penetrating, the sub-suffering can be AA plus, and the suffering can be B minus. And that's what we see actually in Nigeria. If the rest of Nigeria doesn't want to wake up and move forward, then those states will wake up and move forward, and those states will crack up the rest of Nigeria. It's twofold, where you have committed leadership, not just committed a hard on another evil leadership, where you have leadership and love in secret. Part of the problem we have in Nigeria is we haven't really had leadership that has loved us. So let me come to Edo State. You know, we are proud of people, we Edo people, we are proud of people. In the twelfth and thirteenth century, we started interacting with people from Portugal, Spain, and all those things, but we in Edo State, we had the capability to build the building boards. People who know the building boards, it's a scientific and engineering feat, built by the Edo people before we had mechanical equipment. So we created the floor, we built the building. We had street lights made from power, we were able to test it in the room, so that it's true. The question, if I say that, so what has happened to us in the past, that's already answered. And I look back to my points, I said, now the story I said yesterday, I love that story. This is a Edo woman who got a first-class university. This Edo woman, she got a first-class university, she has two kids, she's married, she held down three dogs in America, but she got a first-class university. When we are reading her citation, people will believe that a woman, two kids, three dogs, got a first-class university. We had, we are an Edo woman, the spirit of us Edoites, our capabilities. I see Sammy told me here, his brother Mike, he's the one of the greatest decisions of our, Edo position in Charles, of our life. There are many of us like that. So how come we have an Edo State? That's the first state that is not in the rest of Nigeria. And this is for me, my favorite slide, yeah, to pay. It just shows the kind of people we are, and the kind of people we have brought out of Edo State. And then in April, my mentor, which has been written for Nigeria, at ten years old, he moved to the motion for the independence of Nigeria. He thinks that Nigeria, Nigeria has a different. Many of you, you are big supporters of Nigeria. Creativity comes out of Edo State. I don't want to try anything with my own. We have to pick our own way. One of the greatest people in the world, people who acknowledged the first scene of the factory of mental U V T H, Professor T R M U Bill O'Sagge. And the world will love that guy, brother. And then we have, okay, you want to stand up? Ask Professor Bill O'Sagge, you want to stand up, man? And then they look like, "Brother." And then, and most of the people I stress like him, that feels like me, I'm the one who is like me, brother. One of the greatest, greatest artists, greatest, all over the world, that they have known at age of five, the world will count. How many of you remember that? You know, we have to talk about this, people, we have to talk about this, we have to talk about the kind of people that have come out of Edo. And I asked my brother, I, 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 many of you, the lawyer, the bank, and the office. And sit up, one thing that I said in the speech is you can buy a pizza from people who walk out of the door, you can't buy a pizza from, you can't, I mean, this is called the world, not, 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 And let me tell you something, there's something that politicians or other people can do. You guys, don't see anything. If you stop first, you may mess up later. So, one of the first things this government has changed is to transform the service so that we can work. And there's no better. Years ago, Edo was the. And this is why it is this. Very low as a set of. We feel that even if we were in Edo State, that the last group of us, you guys have. There's. Press for the number one power. That's who is now on my Twitter. Press for the list. Press for the. Oh, right. You can't really see that. That's all the best in Edo State. And you guys have a common interest in Edo State. You know, this is man, all points in Edo State. I think this is the best opportunity that I can press for. So, we. And I'm saying this because I look at. How many people? That was. Need to do. We. Press for the. People. See the. They have all the people. That can understand that. It's all. It has. It has. It has. Something that is. And you. This is Edo State. So moving slowly. By the work that's been done now, almost move faster. We have, this is almost as big as 3,000 kilometers of fiber. So they think it's anywhere in Edo State. I think. We can't tell, both are sitting in London, are sitting in New York, are sitting anywhere in the world. Because of the fiber optic connections that we have. And then the big important output of it about. So we have created an Edo State. It's like a. The foundation of one nation. Now to the next step of. Focus, I think. Move from the foundation. To your life. So, I. It's created in Edo State. Every citizen can live the dream as you like. Because. The path that creates and test and. This is my sense after. I think Edo State. How many people know that you are. How many people are there that you want to do? Okay. So if you. If. How many people know that? How many people know that Zoom was a country with a Nigerian called Reni Fani? How many would know that Reni Fani? How many would know? Is it? The one that's Nigeria. The most intelligent people. People. Super intelligent, that come. How many people in Nigeria? He is the greatest of the. Greatest. That are producing super intelligent people. Also super. Super. And super. So. We must take that narrative. And we must move it to the first world. Because Saravia and I working with a great team of guys. We're looking at five things, we're looking for some fight. And I'm going to run through the five things very quickly. The fact is that our commander and the structure talking to our people in Edo State. And find out what everyone's pain wants are. And people's touch points are. The first thing truly is security. Many of you here, stop coming home. You are afraid, right? Madam, you fear. You fear. Fear kidnapping. Fear this, fear that. I'm robbery. I'll be mad. You know, if we don't get security rights, we're not going to get Edo State rights. If we don't get security rights, we're not going to get. So for us, we are determined to get security rights. You know, one of the things I have met up with. Many women and men, I see what they see there, I know what they see. But 2024, people kidnapped 50 girls. Carrying them into the forest, and we say we can't find them. How? With the technology that is in the world. How can 50 girls enter a forest? And we say we can't find them. Even one person enter a forest. With the kind of drone technology, the kind of heat technology. You know, by the way, you can sit down as well, you can sit outside here. So how can we sit down like 50 people in the forest? There's something wrong. And that's something wrong we must cure. This is 2024. You know, there's something insane in Nigeria that I just cannot understand. And I'm sure many of you in this room cannot understand. They kidnapped somebody, you can't press, how? So I watch, we do everything we really possible to change the narrative. Edo State must. We must. There are five. And those. That's the only thing that move up the way again. And I said this yesterday, when I was talking to my. You know, the easiest thing for Saravia and myself to do is to make sure that we are secure. After the experience in Edo State, you can. So you're. Because you guys, everybody else do the rest. You will bring your money, you will bring your investment once you feel secure. And the thing that's most important to us in this issue of building a first world country. It's. Let me give you a reference for you. Let's assume we have 300 divisions of 400. And let's assume we are all experts. Let's assume you come to Nigeria, take a day off holiday. And let's assume Italy comes to Nigeria, expect 3,000 pounds. Look at that reference. 400 people, 3,000 pounds, treat after a year. Look at what that will do to the economy of Edo State. So if all of Saravia and I do is create a secure Edo State, you guys can do the rest. Period. And I'll come to talk a thing about that later. But when we start to say that our trust, sponsor, we can find the money. To do the things that are necessary to do to secure the state. We must use technology, we must recruit and trade. You know, the constitution of Nigeria is funny. It says the governor is chief executive of the state and the chief. Security officer, but that governor has no troops. So within the constitution of the country, we must secure a safe state. One of the things that I heard some people, the most issues of cultism and drug abuses in Edo State. We will deal with that issue, as I say. We must make our state a secure state. Otherwise, nothing else will happen. I said something about love of people. Guys, you guys are enjoying. Our people are suffering. Even the worst of the things, your Jesus Boris. Your pals. Because I love you, we are suffering. We must. We have. Not to. Was. So we. Would you think actually we. Both of you are excited. We could buy top. Let me. Healthcare, this is all. And we don't focus on secondary and tertiary healthcare. You know, there are things I see sometimes that people laugh. And I laugh back at them because they don't understand. The will of leadership and love of people makes everything. I don't see. Existence. I don't see. In. Horrible. When it's. Invest college of St. Louis Valley, that's the king of. This is. King of. Those many hours. This is. You. Our country. A country where. Those many hours. I made. Let me just say this. And I was faster. When I was studying in London in the UK, I had to go to. I wanted to say this. The most. The most. That's the book that's the first book, about chemistry book, the authorities named in those books. 20% and 70% of Nigeria. If you beat any medical book, you wouldn't find one in Nigeria today. But all we do is fix up the wealthiness of our people, it's almost in our minds. I'm thinking. And. You know. Edo State from another most parts, again in modern. That's. As. Those students there are careful, I can not drop. They got a wonderful job with a palm project. Now, Edo State is about one power between states in Nigeria. And that move Nigeria back to the. I've seen the. Doing things that. One. It will be. I respect the world, but I respect. Because there's no way. To. Or. But I have told you that my. Focus on the. Because we must grow our. That. Not to go in Edo State where it's. So before. And then they have. It. It. You might. I've seen that. I see. To. I will. And let me talk about this for me. And I'm saying. Going to. Pass for the palace, wonder what. You know, that's a six video party coming. All these Chinese and Indians are great, that is come and stay at the palace. If they come and stay at the palace. And the Tarot. And for the other. Cultural. And try to. You know, we got, this is creating one billion, you're like, come, come, you just. You'll come. Indians will come, Chinese will come. But they will come. This is. Why it's. I look at you here, you come. And you imagine your friends, we love with you. You come and. Too positive to visit. The. The biggest, the best. Just ask your friend to come. And then the Tarot. There's also so kind of. This is. But because we fear, we do come. Because we fear that the back of friends will come. That will. I hope you see one of the. Big. Edo. We basically. So that we can understand the comparison. And we need to compare advantage and. But I compare advantage of the development of Edo State. That's how we do, round over Edo State becoming the first world city. We. Edo. City. I. Before. This. And. So. The. Right. I would see that. The. That's before. So. One. Guys, you guys. We were like. That. I can use it. They do. Everybody. They take. For. To. Talks. Because. Art. So. And it's. The. The shadow. And. Wasn't quite. How. States. We're. Everything. And we must see. People. We find. I was. We have to. We have. We have. And. So. And we have many. And no. Who wrote that stuff. But it. Those that. Are. The. And we know. A. Process. And do. That's strong events. And trust. This. For. This. And. It's. And. Must be. Effective. To. Accountable. Accessible. It. To. It's. 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 Like. So.